Educating, Informing, Serving. TVE, Keeping Government Honest.
Yes.
Sorry. Meeting started. Tipo?
Here.
Mulhern?
Here.
Recording in progress.
Karasinski?
Here.
Rogers? He's not here. Hutwoker? He's not here. Calio? Not here. Luckleider?
Here.
Ward?
Here.
The Swansea zoning board of adjustment agenda for the meeting of November 21, 2022, is as follows. The first business is to call the call to order. The second will be review and consideration of the minutes of October 17, 2022. Then there will be a regional impact vote, followed by public hearings. The first is the ZBA 22-014 special education, a special exception, excuse me, application. Abby Whitney requests a special exception pursuant to section four, article B to C, to operate a daycare facility in her home located at 154 Westport Village Road. The subject property is shown at tax map 70, lot 17, and is located in the residence district. The second public hearing to follow, the ZBA 22-015 special exception application. Susanna Woods requests a special exception pursuant to section four, article B dot two B of the zoning ordinance to convert an existing single-family dwelling to a two-family dwelling. The subject property is owned by the estate of Ardell Dorothy Osborne Levin, located at 15 Prospect Street. The property is shown at tax map 57, lot 83, and is located in the residence district. And there may be other business arise as required.
Minutes from October 17?
Mr. Chairman, would you seat someone for the two missing?
Yes, I'm sorry. I've been all set up to go too. We will see, tonight we will see Wayne for Bill Hutwoker and Jay for Brian Rogers.
Thank you.
Giving us a full board. That's great, five of us. You have minutes from, well, you've been provided minutes from October 17, 2022. Present at that meeting, that are present here is Ann, Adam, Wayne, myself, and Jay. I'll entertain a motion on those minutes.
I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes as written. If anyone's had enough, you can leave them.
Good. A second on that?
One second.
Thanks, Wayne. Thanks, Ann. Any questions on the motion? Any question on the minutes? Questions or concerns before we move to a vote? Hearing seeing none. All those in favor of the motion to approve the minutes of October 17, 2022, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Very good. Minutes are approved. Regional impact vote.
I'll make a motion that neither of these special exception applications have rise to level of regional impact.
Thank you.
Second? Second.
Thank you. Moved and seconded. That neither one of these applications rise to a level of a regional impact. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Now get to the business, to the meat of the meeting. We have a public hearing. Our first public hearing is ZBA 22-014 special exception application. This is a public hearing. Abby Whitney requests a special exception. Almost that education. Special exception pursuant to section four, article B to C, to operate a daycare facility in her home located at 154 Westport Village Road. Subject property is shown at tax map 70, lot 17. And as I said, we've got Jay sitting for Brian and Wayne sitting for Bill. What do we got, Sarah, from the town's perspective on this application?
It's very straightforward. Ms. Whitney proposes operating a childcare facility in her home. She will care for up to three children in addition to her own two children until she's completed licensing through the state. And at that time, I'll have Ms. Whitney fill in the hole here, but I believe she can have up to four children in addition to her own. And the facility will operate from 6:15 a.m. to 4:45 p.m., intending to accommodate healthcare workers.
Good. And no concerns from any one of our staff or Wayne?
No.
Ms. Whitney? Come on up. Take your seat. Come on up. Yeah. So I think it is pretty straightforward, though why don't you tell us a little bit about what you're getting into here?
So just a little bit background with me. I've been in healthcare for almost 10 years now. That's part of the reason why my hours were to be a little bit earlier, just to help accommodate them. I know for me, if it weren't for our babysitter that we had and her opening her home for us at 6:30-ish, a little earlier for us, I don't know what I would have done. So I want to do that as well. So I know there's a lot of people in our area who also work at the county nursing home, which is a bit of a drive, so hence the 6:15, so they have time, especially in the winter, to drop their child off and still make it to work. I intend on having... So my rates are what I feel is a little more affordable, hence why I wanted to take four kids instead of three, so I can still make ends meet, but still offer an affordable amount for people, because as we all know, times are hard right now. But people still need daycare, and I'm not trying to rob anybody of taking care of their child. Also, I did look into my insurance today, and they are okay with me taking up to four children. If I should take anymore, I am to call them, and we would have to do further coverage for homeowners' insurance with that. I do want to be licensed, however, just because I want to get licensed doesn't necessarily mean I want to take more kids. I do have a smaller home. It's an old home. And if any of you don't know, it's one of the original homes of Westport. So there's still some work that needs to be done to the outside of it. It's been a very slow process, but I am working on it and moving towards it. I have made some small things. Healthcare was hard the last couple of years. It's another reason why I wanted to get out.
Okay.
And be home. I did go through an entire pregnancy, right in the smackdown middle of COVID. So I was like, I just kind of got to a point where like, I just want to be home. I want to be home with my kids. I want to be home with other people's kids. I know it's a big need. And I do love children, and this is something that I wanted to do since my oldest was born. I just never felt that my home was good enough, with it being sold and all the things that need to be done. I've made enough progress now where I feel it's safer and it's a better environment. I do have a dog that, she's the best dog in the world, and I know everybody probably says that about the dog, but she's really the best dog in the world. She is so good with the kids, and she just comes and goes whenever she pleases. She'll lay down, she goes to her crate when she's sick of the noise or whatever. I've also done up an agreement with my parents, so that way there's little, if any, miscommunication, you know? These are my rates. These are the holidays off that I have off paid, the one week of vacation paid. You know, during the winter, I will require you to bring winter wear for your child, so we can still go outside. And same thing in the summer, you know? I'll get the hose out, we can do some water play stuff, swimsuits, butt sprays, you know, that kind of stuff. And I have cuddies at the house, so they can keep those things at the house, and at the end of the season, they can go back with the parents. I think that's pretty much the gist of it.
Questions?
I have a couple of questions. So it said in your application that you're aware of two other daycare, people in-home daycare operating. Do you know if they are licensed by the state?
I don't think so.
Okay. So these are just, and it's just a question for you. Is that allowed? I mean, anybody can have kids?
Up to a certain number.
Up to a certain number?
Yes.
So that's...
Yes, so currently what Ms. Whitney is proposing is up to three children. I think it's up to three children, period, that are not your own. So in addition to your own, without licensing.
So there is no mandate for licensure?
Not until you hit number four.
Until, okay. And so the 534, you're not adding on. This is just a part that is going to be for the daycare?
I'm not adding anything on to my house, no. No additions.
Okay. Well, I think that was my main question. I was just curious, because it's been so long since I've needed childcare, so.
And I did do a little bit of research. I can have up to four kids before being licensed. So one after, if I want any more than four, I have to get licensed, like, there's no question.
Did, and this question could be filed by the U.S., Sarah, did Mike go through the house? Did we go through the house on, with that in perspective?
No, that's not required.
Fire department?
That's not required until you become licensed. The health inspector goes through when you become licensed, but there's no town requirement for any of that.
Makes you wonder.
Well, when we did it 20 years ago, or so, a little bit less than that, fire department came to our house, and Mike Jackson was there.
I know that both would be willing to do that. It's not a requirement, yeah.
Is there, are there any other licensing or other than anything that you know that you need to open up a fire department inspection?
Yep, so ironically, one of the things that you have to have before getting fully licensed is your town's approval.
Yeah.
So I've had that, hopefully, after this. But I, the health inspector has to come out, the fire safety has to come out, your water has to be tested. I have three wells on my property, and I did get them tested in the fall. And based on the testing, so I had done the place by, it's on Route 10.
EAI?
Yes. I had them tested, and it was all within, because I was, I didn't really know clearly what tests I was looking for. I said childcare, and they said, yeah, we got that. So it was all within the limits. But I, for my own comfort, do keep bottled water down my house as well. And I do have a wood stove, and I know that was inspected by the fire chief last year. And I do have a gate, not a gate, it's actually, it's an old futon frame, and it goes around my wood stove, and it's all secured into the wall, so that way nobody can get too close without me knowing about it.
We have to get through something.
Yes.
Other questions?
Was the drop-off and pickup done? Is it, people come into your driveway to drop kids off, so that it's nothing on the street or any of that stuff?
It really shouldn't be. I've actually specifically parked my car off to the side in my driveway, like, basically in my yard. That way, when parents come in, they can utilize the driveway.
Other questions? This is a public hearing, so if there is any members of the public here to speak, they're encouraged to do so.
I got a question, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely, Ann.
From an exterior perspective, I know you're referring to summer, you know, and having the kids out and about and so forth. Is there any areas in the property where you could maintain some level of, you know, fencing or perimetering from kids going into the street or being able to, or some intention that you are looking at?
My house is actually pretty close to the road, so I don't intend on bringing them into the front yard often. With it being winter right now, and I have wood stacked on my front porch, I can't comfortably stand at the front door and look out and see that my son is ready to get on the bus. So we all get bundled up, and we all stand in the driveway, and we wait for my son to get on the bus. However, in summertime, it will be easier. I can just stand at the door and watch him. But for the most part, really, I don't have any intentions. I don't let my kids play outside, out in the front yard by themselves, just because it is so close to the road. We, I have an acre of land in the backyard, like, that's where all my land is, is in the back. I have a couple of big swing sets out there. That's where I generally want to.
Sure. And would there be, I guess that maybe my question for more over was not where you're going to have the children. I mean, it makes more sense, it seems, in your backyard, but from a containment perspective, it might make sense to be able to, because kids, I have three children myself, and at this point, they're able to go all three different directions at the same time. I'm one person, and my wife and I can drive. So it would just be something that might make some level of sense of being able to just perimeter off something.
So I would, I would consider and think about one for the front yard, definitely. The way, it's hard to explain, the way that my house sits, the backyard is, it kind of comes out this way, and then there's the tree line on the side. There's a neighbor here, and then there's a neighbor more up this way. I'm not, I don't know if we're...
That's the signature we're looking at.
Yeah. Thanks.
I think if the state doesn't require it for licensure, I'm not... Were you thinking, Adam, would we make that a condition or just a suggestion?
No, just suggesting.
Right.
I mean, from a safety perspective, it might be something to consider, you know, around the playground area or something, just, you know, there's cases...
Corral them a little bit.
Where someone has to use the bathroom, the other kids are outside. I don't know what the age groups you're looking at, you know, so just something to consider.
Yeah. Right now I have, so my oldest son is five, my youngest is two. I have, I'm watching a 10-month-old and a four-year-old. The four, five, and two collectively, as of now, stay together. The two-year-old basically just follows the same. Everywhere they go, he's right behind them. A fence wouldn't be bad. I would, I could consider that.
Sure.
I definitely have considered it for the front yard already.
Is there anything, you mentioned the wood stove perimeter. Is there any other changes that you've had to make inside the house to kind of make things work for you?
I recently put down new flooring in my kitchen and bathroom downstairs. Upstairs is mostly new flooring. I ran out, so there's a small portion that's not done yet. But the upstairs has almost been completely redone. We like to joke that it was made for midgets, because you couldn't go upstairs without bashing your entire upper body. So that's, the ceilings have been raised. We took out the attic and made the ceilings higher. And there is a little hallway with two bedrooms, and then a bathroom upstairs, instead of having like four itty-bitty rooms the size of this table. Downstairs is still the same, made four rooms, a living room, bathroom, kitchen, and a dining area.
And probably not going to use the second floor as part of your...
I only use it for naptime. And I have baby monitors, so, because my child likes to get up out of bed, because we've transitioned into a toddler bed from a crib. So my child likes to get up, so I keep the baby monitor, so I know when they're trying to be sleeping.
Okay. Anything else here?
Nope.
Anything else? Adam? Nope, I'm also okay. All right. I guess we can move to the questions. We close the public hearing? Take some notes. All right. All right. We'll go through the checklist, see how things work out here. Do we, do we concur that the proposed use is similar to one or more uses already authorized in the district and feel it is in an appropriate location for such a use? I'll start with Adam.
I think there's many examples of similar businesses in the, in the area, and it seems that, you know, the conditions are being met, you know, for operating the business in its current form. And it seems that as it grows, the appropriate measures will be taken as well. So I would say yes.
Okay. Ann, do you concur?
Yeah, I do concur. I haven't, this is the first time we've had daycare come before, since I've been with the board. And I would say I commend you for coming in, because I hadn't given any thought. I thought it was something that people knew about and that they're, that everyone would commend, but I'll bet the other two that are operating are not, they haven't come in. And I commend you for doing that, because I think it might be important to know if children are, or any adults, maybe elderly care, if any care is going on in any house. It might be a good idea if we knew.
Right.
Just because of potential fire or safety concerns.
Well, that's the second part, is just an appropriate location, and I don't think that's, that's exactly why.
Yeah.
Kind of gets to, gets to what you're saying.
That's why I appreciate you coming forward. I think that's important.
So you concur that the proposal is similar to?
Yes.
Let me see. Wayne?
Yes, for both the reasons, Indiana.
Okay. Jay?
Yes, I think it's the appropriate location, and no matter how you parse the first sentence, the first part of the sentence, it's already authorized, we remember that. Difficult with that. Either way, you parse that, this is similar.
Sure. And I concur as well. In this district, you, there's a lot of charter. That does go on, licensed or not licensed, approved or unapproved or under the radar. So I agree that this is, this proposed use is similar within the home. And that is, looks like it is an appropriate location thus far. So do we concur that such approval would not reduce the value of any property within the district, nor otherwise be injurious, obnoxious, or offensive to the neighborhood? Ann?
I would say, yes, it would not reduce the property value. We haven't heard any testimony to the contrary, and I don't, I don't see where that would be an issue.
Okay. Jay?
I agree. I don't see any of these potential problems having been addressed by anyone. And I can't imagine in any way this would be a problem. So I approve that it would not, I started that first time.
All right. Wayne?
Yes, I agree that it would not reduce the value of property. The only thing that's going to do is make it a little bit more traffic, some kids in the neighborhood, but the kids in the neighborhood is always good for a neighborhood, I think.
It can be kind of integral. Adam?
I would say yes, agree with everyone as well. And, you know, of course, based on the recent, you know, explanations of obnoxious, offensive, and injurious, that we were educated by our local legislature. I don't find that any of these, this particular use does not meet the threshold of any of those, based on those definitions.
Certainly agree with that. And we don't have any indication in front of us that anyone is even claiming or trying to prove that this is going to reduce the value of their property, with no evidence in front of us to make that conclusion. So I also agree that the approval would not reduce the value of any property within this district, nor be injurious, obnoxious, or offensive to the neighborhood. Do we think there'll be nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians? Wayne?
No, I don't think so. I think, as I mentioned in the prior question, there'll be vehicle traffic, but the hours, the pickup and drop-off time shouldn't be during rush hour on Westport, I don't think.
It's all relative, but...
Yeah.
Ann?
Yeah, I'd say, yes, there'd be no nuisance or hazard. She's already taken steps to get her own vehicle out of the way, so I don't, I don't think there'd be an issue.
Okay. Let's see. Jay?
I don't see nuisance or serious hazard, primarily because all the drop-off and pickup is going to be done in the driveway, out of the general traffic flow, so.
Okay. I concur that there'll be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles and pedestrians given this use within this neighborhood. Do we agree that adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided?
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. I want to play as well. I'll say yes.
Try to keep kind of...
Yeah, no worries.
Robbing it, you know, not every day. Thank you. All right. So moving on to number four, adequate and appropriate facilities. Do we concur that adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation of the proposed use? Jay?
Yes, I do. The applicant has described how she will use the property. I would advise her to pay careful attention to traveling people, and perhaps fence or limit their ability to explore the neighborhood, especially as, you know, six months from now, they'll be six months older and even more.
Six months quicker.
But I don't see any, any indication of there being appropriate facilities provided.
Okay. Adam?
I'd say yes, and I agree with James, that, you know, the applicant has showed that the business and the use is, the thresholds for operating that business and use have been met thus far. And then again, as the business grows to a larger group of kids, that you will follow the appropriate steps, and I'm sure these will be remeasured and readdressed at that time, so yes.
Wayne?
Yes. Yes, based on the information provided.
Thank you. Ann?
Yes.
Okay. I concur. So we've been through the questions. We've answered them all. I could say at this point, we could entertain a motion. Come on, Ann.
Just give me a script, then. Well, I just want to... Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we accept as proposed the ZBA number 22-014 special exception to operate a daycare at 154 Westport Village Road.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve the special exception application 22-014. Any questions on the motion? Hearing seeing none. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Go at it.
At it. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Seven children. You're going to be moving.
You can't do it. There were seven kids in my family. We didn't have a fence.
Not one fence.
Except for that one fire, everything was...
Kids didn't even get to do with that, I'm sure. All right. Good luck.
Thank you so much, guys. Thank you for your time.
You know, good night. Have fun.
There will be fun, guys, yeah.
Sure. All right.
It is amazing when you have kids going just every direction. I think you can handle it now.
Oh, yeah.
So God bless the whole scenario, the desire to do it.
We need more people like that. I have no doubt she can handle it too. All right. Move on to our second public hearing tonight. It's ZBA case number 22-015, another special exception application. We will have a public hearing. Susanna Woods requests a special exception pursuant to section four, article B to B of the zoning ordinance to convert an existing single-family dwelling to a two-family dwelling. Subject property, properties owned by the estate of Ardell Dorothy Osborne Levin, located at 15 Prospect Street. Property shown on tax map 57, lot 83, located in the residence district, pretty close to where we are right now. Sarah?
Sorry to give you another straightforward request this evening, but it's very straightforward. It's an existing single-family house. The, the structure itself is not being proposed to be changed on the exterior at all. There will be no increase in footprint. There is adequate parking on site, there's a concrete pad towards the base of the driveway. That can accommodate three cars. The driveway itself is nearly 100 feet long, and there's an existing barn garage structure that could potentially store another vehicle. It's on public sewer, it has a private well, and it's on just about three-quarters of an acre, right?
Right.
Right over there.
Pretty close by.
And Ms. Woods is intending to purchase the property. And Ms. Woods is intending to purchase the property as of January 1.
Yeah.
I believe it's a family house.
It is. Yeah. My aunt lived there. She bought the house in 1975.
Wow.
Yeah. And has lived there all this time.
I guess, that was a little bit more than, do you have to renovate the house pretty significantly to do what you need?
Not a lot. Not a lot of renovations. Just upstairs, I'll be putting a small little kitchen. And there's already plumbing up there, that's where the washer and dryer is. So just painting and sanding down some floors. I'm not taking down any walls. Adding a door here and there, just for privacy, to separate from the other. That's about it.
Other questions from the board?
I have a question. And I'm not really familiar with questions. So is this gonna turn it into like two dwell, a condo? Is that like?
A dwelling unit?
Yes.
So, so are you, are you, it's not an ADU, right? Attached dwelling unit. So we have, we've been having a lot of zoning applications for detached accessory dwellings, which are, which are, so that you can have a relative living near you on your property.
Okay.
And ADUs, which are attached dwelling units, where you would have like your mother-in-law living, you know, but far enough away you didn't have to talk to them.
I see. Yeah.
So you're not doing that. You're, you're going to?
It's all attached.
Uh huh.
Yeah.
So the, to get between the two, do you have to go outside to get into the other one?
Nope. There's different entrances. Like, there's the front door, which I'll be using for the downstairs tenant, and there's another side door.
So it's a tenant thing. It's you're gonna, are you gonna live there and have a tenant, or are you just gonna?
My older son is going to live there.
Okay.
And there'll be a tenant.
Yeah, I don't, I guess that's really not, not any of my business.
No, but you understand what they're doing.
That's okay.
So when you, when you do that, so you don't have to, does the fire department have to like make sure that there's no, that there's a fire in one side that won't get to the other, or is that really not, that's not your name?
Um, well, when it's only two units, it doesn't like.
It's not considered, doesn't, okay. All right.
Does it need a building permit to do this?
If she's only putting up doors, no. But to add the kitchen, depending what's involved in that, if there are not hookups already in the house for plumbing and electrical or gas, you know, already you'll need a building permit for that.
Okay. I thought you, I believe you're changing the actual outside of it?
No, you know, to run new electricity, to run new plumbing, anything that's required to put the other kitchen in.
Bathroom, if there is another bathroom.
Yeah, if you're adding another bathroom.
No, I'm not adding.
There's already another bathroom. There's already a bathroom there.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, just to clarify, are you saying that she needs a building permit when she makes those changes?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to add that.
It's neither there for our purposes, but.
Right. I'm just curious.
I noticed there were three, at least three doors to the property. It seems to be outside doors, so it seems like plenty of ways to get in and out.
Yeah.
Number entrances.
Out of the barn, there's a, out the back, sliding doors, there's stairs there as well.
It took me a little bit of time to find the right zoning regulation, but on .73 acres, you can have 2.1 units, so.
Spies, spies, spies.
Yeah. Well, that's perfect.
Yep, that's true.
Thanks for reading that, James.
Remind you. Adam, any questions?
I think it sounds pretty straightforward. We try to accomplish, and I understand conceptually. And it sounded like you could have appropriate parking for both tenants?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm just curious. One other question, Mr. Chairman. You know, things like snow removal and so forth, and maintenance of the exterior, how do you plan on, on kind of addressing those things?
So I've already hired somebody to do that. The same person that does it for me and Keen, that he actually lives on so, so it's better. So he'll, and I'll be coming here like every weekend anyway, like I always. And just over time, fix it up. So I want to paint it, but there's only so much I can do budget-wise. It's an old house, it hasn't had a lot of upkeep. So maybe as much as I can on my own, and with help from family and friends. Yeah. So that answers your question?
Sure. I'm just thinking about one of the questions that we are tasked with answering or voting on is proper facilities and management of the facilities and so forth. So
Yeah.
that falls under that. And then trash removal would be one more thing.
Yep. Probably going to be using the same material I had with Keen, which is ABC as well, or get some lots. He's gonna wrap them around it all over here.
Jay, any other questions?
There was something I was gonna talk about here. The, oh, I think I read somewhere that just next door, there's a multifamily dwelling. So it's similar to, it's right in, in among other multifamily.
Right. About the Beehive?
Yeah.
Oh, all across the street here.
Yeah, they're.
On the other side of the metro.
Like the backyard of our house is kind of to the side of their.
Of that particular park?
Yeah, like, yeah. Yeah, we're very close.
This is a village.
Yeah.
It's a dense, it's intended to be a denser part of our town.
Wayne?
I'm all set.
Anyone else? This is a public hearing. You didn't draw the hordes to this one, so it doesn't appear to be, so I don't have anyone here. But this is a public hearing, open to the public. Adam, anything that?
I think there was really the major.
There's one heating system in the house? One heating system?
That's a good question, yeah.
Yeah.
That'll handle both units?
Yeah.
Okay.
And how many thermostats?
Zone heating, yeah.
What's that?
I think they're talking about zone heating, so that you have the person who's, the tenant, the person who can have their own heat, their own
Right.
temperature if they want.
There's one, two.
It's just something to think about, because.
Two, yeah.
Yeah. So the person.
I've had my electrician come over and just kind of say, let's go around the whole thing.
Good.
And you decide, you know, you tell me what I should do, what is okay, what needs to be upgraded, what.
Because that would be, I mean, if you're renting to somebody and they complain to you about it not being warm enough.
Exactly.
Make sure they're paying for the heat.
Yep. Right, right. Yeah.
Yeah, my wife had charge of the thermostat at the 85, and it goes me only, me in the 40 somewhere.
My thermostat. Our heater barely got turned on, and it's at 64.
That's, that's the way I, yeah. Hardly ever turns on.
I'm like 64, 65 too, but.
I guess I'm just.
Telling my not.
I'm just curious, do you have electric cooking stoves? You have, what type of cooking stoves are you providing?
So the downstairs has an electric stove, and upstairs is a small, there's going to be a small electric stove.
Okay.
Yeah.
Other questions before we close the public hearing? Anything you'd like to add?
I don't think so. If anything comes up, I can reach out to.
Yeah. Yeah, town's always available to help.
Thank you.
Sure. All right. I guess we'll close the public hearing and move into the questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. Do we agree that the proposed use is similar to one or more uses already authorized in the district, and is in an appropriate location for such a use? Adam?
I would say yes. It is both similar to one or more uses already authorized in the district. I know we're not supposed to necessarily relate it directly only to other multifamily situations, but there are other houses that have tenants of similar size and so forth, and occupants of similar sizes. So from that perspective, yes. And is it a public location for such a use? There's nothing really changing dramatically to the footprint from any perspective. It's really all interior, so the location seems to have adequate, adequate capacity. So I'd say yes.
Excellent. Anne?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes, for all the reasons I would say.
And I agree, this is, in essence, this is a residential use. Just a residential use of types two. So I think that is definitely a use that's similar to one, similar to one or more that are authorized in the district. Second question. Would such appro, would we, do we concur that such approval would not reduce the value of any property within the district, nor otherwise be injurious, obnoxious, or offensive to the neighborhood? Anne?
Yeah, it would not reduce the value of the property in the district, from what I'm hearing. There's, you know, at most, you're looking at one or two more cars. We're not, you know.
Seventy unit development, right?
Yeah. Right.
Okay. And you don't think anything here would be
No.
the use would be injurious, obnoxious, or offensive?
Everything's being done interior at this time, so.
All right. Wayne?
I agree.
Jay?
I agree. I don't see any evidence that there would be any reduce, reduction of value, or any offensive or injurious use.
Adam?
I would say yes as well.
Okay. I concur. Do we agree that there will be no nuisance or serious hazards to vehicles or pedestrians? Jay?
I don't see any reason there would be.
Thank you. Adam?
I would say yes. I think the density of the use, or the occupants and so forth, could be very similar to a single-family dwelling, multiple people in it, so not a huge difference
A large family.
between, you know, this use and say just that. So from that perspective, yes.
Kind of takes on whether to get homes or not, yeah.
Anne?
Yeah, there would be no, no big deal.
No serious hazards or nuisances, okay.
I have, I have four cars and six motorcycles, so.
Probably. Wayne?
I agree. No nuisance or serious hazard.
Yeah, I agree. It's, again, it's the use is, it's residential, which is what's going on in that neighborhood. And it is a mixed neighborhood, for sure. This is a mixed neighborhood. We are in that neighborhood, I can go for. Do we concur that adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operations of the proposed use? Wayne?
I agree. The public sewer being there is really what made this happen, I think.
Thank you, right. Yeah. Jay?
Yes, again, public sewer, and then I don't see any greater drain on the well, but created by this, that would be for a large family house.
Yeah, possibly less. Anne?
Yes.
Adam?
I would say yes as well. And the applicant has stated that, you know, things like trash removal, snow removal and so forth are being considered and addressed. I would, I would recommend to the applicant utilize our code enforcement department and go through the building. It's a wonderful asset. Mike Jasmine is fantastic at giving advice as well, so.
He's really good. He's really good.
Sarah taught him everything he knows.
Theory education.
Yeah, his name was coming to my times.
He's very helpful.
Great, great. I thought he went to be here tonight, actually.
Yeah, well, he's welcome here. I concur. As, as several of you have noted, we are in a, like a lot of New England towns, we have a lot of larger properties that were in village settings and beyond, that were built for larger families. And we're in a, we're in a, definitely a transformational time now of household size. Seems to be a appropriate use of a property that formerly housed, you know, a number of children, you know, and maybe extended family at the time too. And that's when it was built in that era. And I think this sort of morph of this property is appropriate, given the fact that there's a need. It's not like she produces something that really has no need in our community. We have much smaller households, and ultimately, it seems a larger demand for the housing we have. So I think this is good. And it, and this being in a village setting, I think it even makes it more appropriate, so. All right. After all that, we can entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion for a ZBA 22-015 special exception for 15 Prospect Street, that we accept this conversion of existing single-family dwelling to a two-family dwelling.
Do we have a second? Any questions on the motion? Hearing none? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate so by saying aye.
Yeah.
Aye.
Go at it.
Thank you.
Thank you for investing in West Swansea.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
A lot of good things happening in this part of town. You've noticed that the sidewalks, the lighting.
Yeah, it's really, I'm excited about West.
And your son's gonna live there?
He's going to live in the smaller part.
In the smaller part?
Yeah. And I'll work out the bigger part.
Let him know that we have plenty of committees and groups here that he could volunteer for.
Okay. I asked him to join me tonight.
No, well, it's, it's, I know, I have one of those. But, no, it's important, and it's also good for his, you know, whatever career path he's on. He could learn a lot, and it's something that I think would be beneficial. Would you guys, if somebody applies for, to work for you, and you have on their resume that they volunteer for, in their community, I think that would be a bonus.
I agree.
Yeah.
Thanks for that.
Absolutely.
Let him know.
I will.
Okay. Any other business?
Nope.
An early night, or an earlier night than what we used to do? Okay, terrific.
Thanks, man.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Good night.
Well, I guess at this point, with nothing else to ask for, I don't know, we can entertain a motion to adjourn. Oh, you gotta.
I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn.
Somebody else needs a second.
Yeah, can we have a second? Yes, someone, I was, James, I want you to stay on.
I second it.
All in favor?
Yeah, thank you. All in favor? Please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed.
I have a question before everybody leaves, just so I know what to do. At the end of my, I live on Park Street, which is between T-Bird and Dunkin' Donuts in North Swansea. At the end of my street, it is almost impossible to take a left-hand turn out on Route 12.
Yeah.
And I want to, I want to make that a permanent right-hand turn only.
Then go around.
And make people go around.
Around the road.
Now, how do I go about doing that?
Straight road.
Well, it's, it's entrance on a straight road, but the road, Park Street belongs to the town of Swansea. And I don't, it's not a zoning issue.
No.
I don't think. But I just, I'm curious.
Give me a call at the beginning of next week.
Beginning of next week.
Yeah, because people who should be part of this conversation are out this week.
But you, so in my mind, yes.
Just one thing. When we had the plane crash.
Yes.
I was trying to get to Papagallas to pick up dinner. And I couldn't go around Rotary to go up there.
Right.
I couldn't go up Factory Road and come back down Route 12, because it was all blocked off. But I did go through and up and onto Park Street and try to get over. And then I could, I could, I didn't. I parked at Thunderbird and walked. But I could have taken a left turn, and other, other people did. Take a left turn and driven up to Papagallas. So that was only an emergency situation.
Right.
But it would have been helpful if it had been really nasty weather or whatever, to be able to take a left turn, under those circumstances.
I hadn't thought about that.
But that's only an emergency situation where they closed off the roads.
Right. I'm just thinking, because it, to me, I, I sit there, I watch the traffic backup into Park Street, because people are trying to go into Dunkin's.
Yeah.
And there'll be, you know, there'll be six cars, and they're, and I'm like, what are you doing? How much gas? I mean, it's 12, 12 cars deep, waiting to get a coffee.
Get a sweet on the coffee.
And I hear you, and I think you're right. That's what we need to do. I just want to, and perhaps on that night, the police should have blocked off Park Street also.
Yeah.
Because nobody wanted to, they didn't want any people on that road.
Right.
So it probably should have, you know, I'm, I'm just blowing smoke here, but I think that's, that's the only time I could think that I would want to take a left-hand turn there.
Yeah. I'm, I'm just trying to look out, I mean, it's really just to keep the traffic moving.
Yeah.
In my mind, it's like the more, the more we can keep the traffic moving, the better off we are. Instead of having cars waiting for somebody who may or may not have an opportunity to take a left.
Gotcha.
Take a right, go around.
There is that situation, I'm trying to think what the street is, but where Norm's Ski Shop is in Aquay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
There's that sign there that states that you can only utilize a left-hand turn between these hours. And it tries to mitigate it though, for, you know, rush hour vibes.
I was thinking the same thing. You know, 2:30 in the morning, taking a left there, isn't it?
Take a left, so.
But I'm sure there's times in the day where.
Five to five worse.
Five AM to five PM.
All right, well, I, I didn't get a lot of reception from.
Or there's a stencil and some spray paint, and you can just go, go at it.
I can go fix it.
Yeah, right.
Fix it yourself.
You can't take a left out of the school parking lot, on Route 32, over by the SAU building.
Yeah.
They want you to go right and around the road, or you go south.
Yeah, oh, that's, that's precedent. Yeah, oh, that's an, that's precedent.
That's, that's good precedent, I just got to find out, I need to get a petition, go around, or a door, which will be fun, because I'm so shocked.
Yeah.
But I think the school just took it upon themselves to do that, I don't...
It might have been, you know, it might have been part of planning too, because of taking, you know, taking a...
Okay.
I don't know, taking a left there is, you know, probably, no?
That was part of the roundabout.
And it was all part of the roundabout, yeah, it was all part of that roundabout development, for sure.
So, there may be precedents, and certainly, with town managers and...
And that intersection you're talking about is a whole lot busier than the one you, you're talking about, coming out of the SAU building.
Yeah, 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 that's not bad.
Hundreds of cars go by, hundreds of cars, hundreds.
Lots of cars.
All of them are done and closed.
Yeah, and that, doesn't that, it seems like that facility, that, that shop closes pretty early, I mean, they're not open till midnight.
Yeah, they used to be, but they have trouble getting help from anyone else.
Oh, that's why, okay. I'm certainly, that's a good precedent, is the one over by the SAU building, if you haven't seen it, it's...
No, I'll, I'll go check that out.
Yeah.
All right, I'll give you a call.
Gotta take a right out of there.